Okay, I'm gonna open up the, uh, the meeting. This meeting is being audio and videotape- recorded. It is being seen presently on Channel Nine and it will be uploaded to, uh, YouTube. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Please remain standing.
I wish to mention the passing of a number of Dyton residents. Robert J. Lopes, Suzanne Ayotte, Gilbert Souza, Raymond Belabo, Barbara Blackwell, Carlos Maderas, Ryan Hazel. Dyton is known as a small town with a big heart. And Dyton's big heart continues to grieve for Ryan Hazel and his family. And in their memory, I would request a moment of silence, please.
So we're gonna begin the meeting with a, uh, hearing on a liquor license for Seventeen Twelve Restaurant. But before we do that, I'm asking for about a ten-minute delay. I would ask for a motion to go down to new business, seven A. Vote in order to euthanize.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we move item seven A, uh, out of order, out of order.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. Madam Town Administrator, do you have a comment, please?
Good evening. The District Attorney, Dyton Police Department, and Animal Control Officer are all in agreement that the five expected dogs be ordered to be euthanized. The dog's owner, Mr. Dunmore, has been notified and advised of his rights and has signed a waiver of his rights to a dangerousness hearing and to appeal the decision made this evening. And therefore, you can proceed with your vote.
I'm entertaining a motion to order to euthanize the following dogs involved in the severe attack and ultimate death of a human occurring on May ninth, 2019, on Maple Swamp Road. Gigi, a Dutch shepherd, two years old. Buffy, a Belgian Malinois, eight months old. Rita, a Belgian Malinois, eight months old. Otis, a Belgian Malinois, eight months old. And Mona, a Belgian Malinois, four years old.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it. I just wanna thank, uh, for the board, the Dyton community for the support and comfort that they've given Ryan Hazel's, uh, parents during this terrible, terrible time. And Mrs. Goulart mentioned that we're a small town with a big heart. That's not just a slogan, and you people have shown me how important it is that when we, something like this happens, that we unite and we try to help each other. So I just wanna thank all the people in town for all the work that they've done. Thank you. So we're gonna go back to the, um, hearing on the liquor license for Seventeen Twelve. I received a, uh, letter today from the, uh, fire chief. Who's representing the Seventeen Twelve?
I'm here for the applicant. If you could, please.
So we'll have a vote to open up the hearing on the, uh, liquor license.
Right. So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, the ayes have it. So I'm not sure if you've seen this letter.
I have not. This is the first I've heard of it.
But I've seen, uh, received a letter from the fire chief, and it says, "My department is okay with the liquor license transfer from Giorgio's Restaurant to the new Seventeen Twelve Restaurant with the following stipulation. A fire alarm system will need to be installed within the structure to the current code within the first six months of the business operation with that time period starting on the date of this letter. The current suppression system within the cooking hoods will need to be tied into the new fire alarm panel. This system will have to be monitored by an alarm company. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me at any time."
We can address those concerns with the fire chief.
He said he, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, he said he is going to send that in writing so that you'll have that, but I'll make sure that he does.
Yeah, he was at the premises. I was there during one of his inspections, and I believe he had to leave for a call, so I don't, I don't think we got to complete it.
So based on information, other information that I received today, I am asking that this hearing be continued to either June fifth or June twelve, whatever's convenient for the applicants.
Could I ask why? It's fairly straightforward.
I can't state why. The Town Administrator will be in contact with you either after this meeting or tomorrow. She can discuss that with you. I prefer not to state the reason.
We've had a conversation with the applicant as well this evening, so they do know, uh, that we're continuing.
Okay.
Literally, this came, literally, this came in, I don't know, an hour ago, so, well, it'll be fine.
Yeah, I just got no notice of what's going on, so.
So what date is best, June fifth or June twelve?
I think we'd like to do it as soon as possible, so I would ask for June fifth.
And we're okay to have it on?
I'm okay with that. Um, can we just set a time, so six thirty on June fifth?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you accepting motions?
Yes, I am.
I'm sorry.
Depending on your agenda, could you do it later? I have another hearing, but it is important that we get this done.
Sure, so that's just the first order of business, what works.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we do it at about seven thirty? Would that be possible?
Seven thirty's, okay, we're gonna be doing interviews.
Just trying to get you in and out, but that's fine.
Yeah, I appreciate it, but I have, I have another matter, but it's very urgent we get this acted on.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move the public hearing, uh, for the liquor license transfer, uh, for Seventeen Twelve Corporation Incorporated to seven thirty PM on Wednesday, June fifth.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone here representing Forty-four Liquor License, uh, Corporation? No? So, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody here from Forty-four Liquor?
I know what the gentleman looks like.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Matthew Porter. I'm the attorney, uh, for the applicant here today. So before the board, this is a transfer of the Forty-four Liquors Corp., uh, package store license. The transfer is taking place to, um, Forty-four Liquors Corp. here in Kumar Patel and Amit Kapar Patel, who are the fifty percent shareholders of the corporation. No major changes to the operation of the store, no structural changes whatsoever. Their lease is in order, their financing is in order. Both of these individuals have grown up in the family industry, certainly understand the responsibilities that come along with a liquor license. They're both tip certified, everybody that operates the store or is employed by the store will be tip certified as well. So certainly qualified buyers, and everything should be in pretty good order here. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the application, and the applicants can as well.
Should there's any member, have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
No.
I, I don't have any. So we're voting to approve the transfer?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we transfer the liquor license for Forty-four Liquors Corporation to, is this in the name of a person or a business?
No, it's to be in the name of a corporation, so, yeah, it's Forty-four Liquors Corp. is the name of the corporation.
That's who holds it now?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Why did I make the motion?
No, it's, uh, yeah, no, you're confusing me. No, that's, that's the name of the new corporation.
So what's the old?
So?
Uh, the old corporation is Route Forty-four, uh...
Liquors?
Yeah. Hang on, just one second.
Is it Route Forty-four Liquors?
What's it on, what is on the license, the current license?
Yeah, I'd have to pull it up, but first, so here, give me one second. Uh, no, it's, uh, Medway Enterprises, Inc., actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's something like that.
So from Medway Enterprises, Inc. Corporation to Forty-four Liquors Corporation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yes, I'll thank, thank you, Mr. Dr. Zegraffus for that amendment, thank you.
You seconding that motion then?
No, I made the motion.
I'll second.
I just heard him make the motion.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just say, um, Forty-four Liquors Corp. DBA, so doing business as Forty-four Liquors?
Excuse me?
So it's, um, transfer from...
Medway.
Winthrop Enterprises to Forty-four Liquor, I'm sorry.
Medway.
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 All right, uh...
To Forty-four Liquors Corp., doing business as Forty-four Liquors.
Uh, first of all, could I, uh, would you remove?
Sure, I will, I will, uh...
Withdraw the second.
Rescind my second.
And I will withdraw my, my motion. Let's try it again.
So I'm asking for a new motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transfer of the liquor license from Medway...
Enterprises.
Enterprises Incorporated to Forty-four Liquors Corporation.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
And then if we could just get an approval of the pledge of the license as well for the ABCC? There's a pledge of license to Rockland Trust.
I'm entertaining a motion to approve the license for the, uh, Route Forty-four Liquor Corporation. Is there a motion?
In the name of the...
It's a pledge of the license to Rockland Trust Company. It's the lender on the loan, but that needs to be approved as well by the town for the...
The license becomes an asset that, should anything happen, the bank can take it essentially. That's, it's...
So it's just approving the pledge of the license to Rockland Trust Company?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. So the update on the town renovations, do we have to wait till seven, Madam Administrator?
I don't think so.
We, we can, I think there's other things on the DVD floor, so that's fine.
If so, then I wanna go to public input. Is there any public input?
I have a question about Commonwealth Dog, is that...
You wanna come to the, uh...
I don't do anything with the CCO, but I just wanted to...
Come to the microphone, please.
Now, the circus is gone.
I just wanna point out that, uh, we just had to address a very serious matter, and I just wanna be respectful to the Ryan Hazel's family.
Hundred percent. I'm James Lamonti from Roman K9 Academy, where we have ten working dogs, and we've been doing that for a long time. We support your decision a hundred percent, and I know it's a difficult decision, and I'm sorry for all that happened in this community, solely from the working dog community, but we're tasked with Wheaton College and Tufts University in our research. If, it would be an opportunity to learn from this event, if we would be able to do some behavioral assessments on the dogs prior to them being euthanized. It would be impeccable and important for us to be able to gather that information, especially where you have adolescents and juveniles for our research that we do.
I'm not sure that's a decision that we wanna, uh, or permission that we wanna give, quite frankly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my concern is that, under public input, a major agenda item has been put forth, and I am not comfortable voting on this tonight. I don't know enough about, uh, this type of research, and, um, other than hearing the request, I, I'm, I just can't vote on this tonight.
I feel the same. I understand what you're asking.
What I'm saying is that we can gather, from, from our expertise, we look at it, it's not something that takes months to do. It can be done within a very short period of time, but it gives us, it gives us the information that we can gather from the behavior of the dogs and then move forward with other things that could very well potentially alleviate problems in the future. So it's something that would be positive for...
I, I think we, we voted on a motion tonight, very serious motion, and I would hope that the town acts as quickly as possible. I wouldn't want to delay our decision, quite frankly.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'll also add that the owner is not aware of this, I don't believe, and we already done what we legally had to do.
Yeah. Is there any other public?
I'm sorry. I have nothing else, I'm sorry. I was gonna point out that she was recording, so that people were...
Okay, let's go into the Town Administrator's, uh, report then, and we'll, we'll be, you at seven, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Uh, seems rather silly to transfer into, but, uh, what we have on the docket tonight is a request to install a crosswalk at Lane Field. It's come to our attention through the Parks and Rec Committee, so they are in support of it, and I checked with our police chief, who also agrees. You have in your packet, if you go to the ed, um, bottom of that email, the cost information on this, which is fairly, um, low, and we can install that ourselves. So the next step would be to begin a public hearing for those in the area so that they were aware that a crosswalk was going to be installed. We'd hear their public input, and then you could vote, and that is if you are in favor of proceeding with that process. So it's here for you today to, uh, take it to the next step, if that's what you decide to do.
So what is the board's position on this?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I read, um, the email threads, and it seems like, um, the police chief is in agreement with, um, the Parks and Recreation Commission's recommendation, so I have no, uh, I have no issue with that, with the installation or the, the making of the crossing walk.
And I should be clear, I apologize to the public, that it's, um, from a parking lot over to where the, um, actual playground and field is. I should state that.
I'm also not opposed to it, so do we have to have a motion in order to have the public hearing then? A motion to...
An, an agreement or a motion, I just needed to make sure that the board was...
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we, uh, proceed with the next steps required, uh, in order to, uh, gather input to install a crosswalk on the lower end of Main Street from a parking lot south to the Lane Field.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Um, the John Guilfoyle PR, uh, information is here before you with an updated agreement, so I went through that invoice, and, um, I then broke down for you exactly what we would quote-unquote be ordering and the cost of such, and then I broke it down between fire, police, and the town, so that you could really see, uh, what was before us, what was a one-time cost, and what would be, what would be continuing year to year. And that, the continuing year to year is to pay for the services per month and the, uh, security certificates for websites and domain charges, things like that, um, which we already do pay for in other avenues, so, um, that is what is before you. I tried to make it clear and simple, and then we have an updated agreement, um, with them, I thought, because next in the packet is for Netrospect, so I can get to an updated agreement, you can vote on it next time, but I think Mr. Guilfoyle did show, um, what he could do for us recently.
We would just have to change around probably some of the numbers from the agreement...
Well, that's what I did. I did update it, but I think I gave the wrong agreement for your packet, so it, if you are okay with these numbers, then that's what shows up in the agreement.
Did you prepare this?
The thing that says Guilfoyle PR metrics, yes, that's me. That's from me.
No, this is really good, and it really helped me to see, uh, what the costs, um, would actually end up breaking out as, um, in an accurate way, um, without double, double charging or anything like that. Um, my question would be, uh, is this in the budget for next year? For fiscal year twenty twenty?
Specifically for this, no, but there's the ability to purchase this. Um, we do have some lines that are funded for things like this.
Do we already have them identified?
You have the, well, I'm thinking some from Professional Technical on Fire, Professional Technical on Police, and then the Selectman's Professional Technical, or my own, uh, my budget, but you have more than me. So...
So we're not asking, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 oh, it's okay.
We're not asking for more monies. This is monies that are already available, and this is how we...
You're just choosing to spend them in this way.
If we decide to agree, this is how we're gonna spend the monies.
And, uh, one note, that I believe the news portal thing is a separate website, 'cause I looked up at another town and I saw what they did, so we weren't in favor of the town's website being changed or in any way, 'cause we just spent so much time perfecting it. So, um, it would be an additional website that we would link to, and it would just have all of our news stuff, and I think that would actually require a domain charge of thirty dollars a year, which is minuscule.
Um, I just have one, one additional question, if it's okay. Um, so going forward, does that mean, um, that fire would pay for the, their costs out of their own budget? Police would pay for their own costs out of their budget? Is that how that's gonna work going forward?
So for this coming year, I, that's what I would request and, um, recommend, because they're purchasing things like a website, and they're getting started with some social media accounts, so they're actually getting some products started up in the first year. Going forward, I would probably advocate to put this in data processing, but this first year, because there's one-time charges, I believe they should come out of their respective budgets, because they're paying for products that they're gonna use, if that makes sense.
And they're okay with that? They understand it's gonna come out?
I think they want the, I think they want this, so if it, they don't like me taking their money, but I think they want this, so...
That makes sense to me, like, going forward, that it would come out of a centralized, 'cause how would you pay for this one contract out of these three or two or three different accounts? It's a little confusing. I think it'd be confusing for Jen.
Right, and at that time, it's just the monthly charge, and the regular, um, domain charges and the security, so that would be a recurring expense that we do already pay for similar things out of that same budget. So to me, that makes sense.
So for the purpose for the, uh, the town's citizens, the total, uh, cost for fiscal year twenty twenty is twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars, and the recurring cost the following year will be eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars, and the fire department will pay seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars, as well as the police department paying the same amount, and the selectmen's office will pay ten thousand and ninety-six dollars for that first year. Do you have any questions?
And the bulk of that is based upon website creation, um, so going forward, would it be, yeah, exactly.
Seven thousands of that money is, uh, to create the websites for the fire and the police department?
So the twenty-four thousand for the first year includes the eleven thousand that will be, the, the cost will drop to eleven thousand, three forty-eight a year?
Yes, yes, right, correct.
So since the, uh, a Board of Selectmen account, excuse me, will be used for the news portal charge, um, does that mean that for this...
Yep, yep.
For this time, for fiscal year?
Twenty.
Twenty. Um, does that mean that it will be a general news portal, or is this only gonna be news from our fire and, um, police departments?
Oh, no, townwide, townwide, so, um, the one I actually looked at had a lot of Board of Selectmen activity on it, um, different videos and things like that, so I, I envision it townwide. I think the Board of Health can get a lot of use out of it, because they have quite a few programs going on throughout the year, the rabies clinic, the bulky item pickup week, things like that, so I see this as really a townwide feature.
So a library could use this also?
I, right. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry, I forgot the library. I love the library. I'm sorry.
Will this have any connection to Channel Nine for people that don't have, don't go on the web and don't have computers, but watch Channel Nine?
Um, I'm sure we can put together bulletins. Um, I know that the cable is really doing, you know, working hard on, um, increasing what they can do with their channel, so I'm, I, I don't wanna say yes, of course, but I think that they could do that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're not gonna take any action on this until we get the contract?
Okay, is that...
Is that correct?
I would actually like you to vote for it, and then, um, I'll put this, these figures. You've seen the agreement.
Yeah, just the numbers.
The number was off.
Right.
So this is the number. I double-checked with him if that was the number, and he agreed, and, um, so...
So these will be the numbers?
Right.
That it will be in the contract?
Right, in the agreement. And then I'm actually gonna, this top part that talks about everything we're ordering, I'm gonna attach the contract, like a scope, so that he checks all the boxes essentially, but, uh, I do believe that we would not have done very well over this past, uh, couple weeks if he didn't help us, so I do believe it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I, I can attest to that personally, that I've had contact with them, and, uh, they've been very helpful to the town. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to, um, make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the Guilfoyle Public Relations, uh, contract for the, a period from July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two, two thousand twenty, for a total cost for fiscal year twenty twenty of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
May I just make a request that it's seventy-eight, in case that thirty-dollar domain gets in, 'cause it may have a thirty-dollar domain charge?
Oh, I see that, okay. Um, for a, up to a total cost for fiscal year twenty twenty of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say I agree with, um, with your assessment, um, of the company. I think that, um, they really helped the town through a difficult time, um, and they made it, you know, a little bit easier to navigate the types of questions we were getting and the type of inquiries, um, so I'm, I'm happy. I think this, um, that was a really, they did an excellent job.
I agree. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you. Uh, the next is Netrospect, he is our, um, network guy who's gonna help lead us as we transition from an old company into a new one. Last meeting, you had provided some feedback, I took that, I stuck it back into the contract. There's a cap, um, on the second page of this agreement, item D, um, stating that additional funding requires authorization, the cap is five thousand dollars for the year. There's also, um, I added an A of that section, that the town shall only pay for work authorized by the town, and, um, all travel is part of this contract and no reimbursement will be made. I added those three items.
And it will require your approval or designee?
I wrote Town Administrator or her designee, because like, if Karen is, I trust Karen implicitly, so if Karen says, "I need you to fix..." Oh, you're welcome. "I need you to fix this email," um, yeah, he needs to do it.
Doesn't trust us, the board, but that's not... Do you have any questions, Mrs. Goulart?
No.
I don't, I appreciate you making the changes.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And he's been doing, um, just to give you an update, he's been working on our mail server and putting in the required equipment for that, and, uh, working with the police department on generating new emails so that they will finally have town-related emails, addresses. Right now, they're on Comcast. It's just an update.
So, yeah. So we don't wanna act on this then?
No, I do want you to act on this, yes.
So I guess, before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I did just wanna ask, so for the sort of techie question, so for the email addresses, like, you know, I, we all have email addresses, like Jim, Stacy, we all have email addresses that are housed by the current vendor. Those will be migrated over, and then we'll be able to just...
Yes, so we have our...
Create and delete as we, we need.
Right, so D-Day is, um, a date in mid-July. Sorry, my security sensor is like, maybe I shouldn't say that. Uh, it's in July, and so we wanted to do that because it would give us time to transition, save all your emails, migrate them over, um, and he's given me the steps for that, so I can tell people how to do that, and then point the townofdyton.com address to the new address, which would probably be dyton-ma.gov as your email link there, um, and point it, and then give us all of the time that we need to tell people who email us regularly, "Hey, you know, my email's gonna be changing, please update your records." So we have a, a bit of a transition plan going there.
But it won't affect service, 'cause what I'm...
No.
It shouldn't, because what I'm thinking is, is there's probably a way to have it set up so that the old email, like, if someone sends it to it, it routes it automatically to the new email address. so that the old email, like, if someone sends it to it, it routes it automatically to the new email address.
So that's what we're doing, but it's also incumbent on us to tell everybody, "Hey, I'm getting a new email, and please update your records." So what I plan to do, once mine's created, I'm gonna just put it in the bottom as a signature part, you know. Effective this day, my email's changing, please update your records.
And we'll make sure we get the website updated. I just wanted to make sure, like, services, that's the main way that people contact us, so.
Absolutely.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the services/fee agreement between the Town of Dayton, Massachusetts, and Netrospect as prepared this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
It also has me as the signatory, and I, you've authorized me for data processing, but I'm gonna sign on this.
Oh, so we'll vote to authorize you?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize Town Administrator Mallory Aaronstein to sign the contract, to be a signatory to this contract here this evening.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Any discussion?
Is the town accountant gonna accept that?
She should. I have that, you signed that form that allows me to process 155.
I know, but state law says that this chairman of the board or the full board must sign contracts. That's, this has come up before. I just don't want this held up. That's my only concern.
Well, I signed another one, so now I'm kinda nervous, but she accepted the other one.
How long ago was that?
Recently, it was the email one, because it comes under data processing. It means paid through data processing, it's organized through me. Well, I'll find out, and if it doesn't, I'll be speaking with you and asking.
The contract's fine. I would just say, if there's any question, just change the signature line for the chairman, okay?
And then if they're, what I'm also thinking, well, if that happens, like, if it gets booted back, is there any way that, to avoid a delay, that the chairman could do an executive order, and then that would come back?
It doesn't have to be, because I'm getting right now from Selector that that's not what's, they have no issue with me doing it unless the town accountant has an issue with me doing it. And then if that's the case, the default will be the chairman anyway. So that one, it requires special designation, so that's, we would just change this page.
So are we amending the motion, or we don't have?
You don't need to. It's clear, it's clear from the discussion.
A contingency, so it won't be held up.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Before you complete your report, I would like to go to the
Absolutely, I know we're at seven.
It's seven o'clock. So you're gonna provide us with an update on the renovations?
I have some big work for you, and I apologize for not being part of your package. But office manager's been on vacation, so we'll do it on my house.
Are you doing your own copies?
I don't have a cat program, so.
Thank you.
We can print this out. We can't print out a cat file very well. Thank you.
So this is the basement.
This is the lower level of Town Hall, yes. Excuse me, good evening, board, good evening, Dayton, hello, everyone. So what you're looking at is basically the, excuse me, the meeting room area, the lower level of Town Hall. And as we discussed previously, we're looking to reconfigure the downstairs area. The town administrator and I talked about the logistics, and we agreed that doing something with the meeting room to actually make it an inviting space, as well as accommodate some of the cables' requests and the problem that I see with the food bank, we can do that first, and we can do that almost immediately. I'll let the town administrator talk about funding sources, but it looks like it's something that we could do fairly quickly. So basically, what you're looking at, the dashed lines on the proposed walls that would be constructed. Cable, and this will lead to Mrs. Selecton Glot's point about something said earlier. Cable actually wants to expand for several reasons, but most importantly, they wanna put a studio in. They wanna put a studio in so they can produce public relations videos, things of that nature. So I think it would go along with what Selecton Glot said earlier about getting things out to people who don't have the electronics or who are tech savvy. So Cable has that mindset, so I know that this will be utilized probably on many fronts. So in order to do that, they have to absorb the current conservation area, and we have to create a new space for them, which is depicted here by that dashed line. The food bank obviously needs space. I think they need secured space. And we would do that by creating their own secured room towards the back of the meeting room that would also incorporate the two closets that they currently occupy. And what I plan to do there is actually remove some of the walls in that area, so they're not closets anymore, it's just one large room. By doing that, we're gonna reduce the size of the meeting room to about 25 to 30 persons from, it's right now, it's slightly in excess of 40. But as we also discussed, we have a very large venue next door, where if someone had, or a board had a meeting, public hearing, that would exceed that, we have the space on campus. So, all that said, how would we transform the space in addition to reconfiguring it? We would put in new carpeting, we would put in new ceiling tiles, and we would also put in new high-efficiency LED lighting. And one of the town administrators' sticking points was the configuration of the table for the, for the actual board members, or committee members. So I've seen a similar table like I depicted on the, on the plan, which gives, you know, more focus to each other, so board members can converse one another without leaning across the table. Plus, it just, the level of professionalism has escalated, so what's that all gonna cost? So we did get some cost estimates, and we can do all of that in this particular area of the building, which would include some fresh painting, for around $10,000. It might be slightly in excess of that, but right around that number. And we would use mostly in-house labor for that. The carpeting contractor would be a contractor known to us, and that of course, the town electrician would be leaned on heavily for the electrical portion of it. I would also, as part of that, like to freshen up that entrance on the, on that side. Right now, it looks too industrial. I look at it, and I don't wanna walk out it. So I think by doing that, we would paint the floors, paint the walls, make it so that people would wanna utilize it. So I think what it would do is it would create a more efficient space, it would create a more effective space. And I think board members and committees would actually wanna meet in that room, which is ultimately what we're after. And then, once this is done, we can talk further about the reallocation of space in the remaining part of the lower level. But I think it should be phased, both for monetary concerns and for logistics concerns, so.
Speaking of, oh, I'm sorry.
Is this north?
It is.
So down, so, okay, so this is the intersection where the hall comes in?
More or less.
And then this continues down past the storage? Okay, all right, thank you.
When you see those little dashed lines on the right side of your page, that just means a continuation. This plan keeps going. I just didn't feel the need to do the whole.
And you had, you had explained the other half of the plan.
Right.
So which plan, so I, I understand why it's gonna be done in phases, but what's the first phase gonna be?
This.
The meeting room.
The meeting room.
And appoint of the cable.
But how does that help the people who are cramped in an office?
So, so we've got the money right now to do this, if you approve it. We're waiting on your approval. We can take care of this, and he can get started. I would like the meeting room done, moving the ZBA over back into the meeting room temporarily while construction goes on for the, not, I shouldn't call it construction, but the other part of the office, Phase Two, goes on. And then conservation can be moved over there, so that we can figure out the cable situation. To me, cable's Phase Three, but Phase One right now is the meeting room. Phase Two is the additional office space, which I think you're speaking about. We would finish that room first, and then in the next fiscal year, take care of.
Is that because that's gonna be more expensive? I'm just confused why it's being prioritized like this.
Actually, it's a little deeper than that. When you look at things from a logistic perspective, right now, we have two boards meeting in their own rooms currently. In order to get into those rooms to do the construction that I need to do, they need to have a functional space. Now, I understand that that space can be used in its current state. The problem is, once I create the office space and they have to meet in there, I now can't renovate that space, 'cause it's being used all the time. So right now, the only way that meeting gets, room gets, gets used is when next door is double-booked. So right now, I have almost a vacant space that I can work on without much interruption. And then, once that's used in earnest by the committees and boards, I now have the offices void of meeting spaces, which I now can renovate and not worry about the logistics. So it's multi-layered, the money is part of it, but logistics is a bigger part of it, to try to keep things running while it's going on. To answer your question about the problem, we fully intend, we being the town administrator and I, if you approve this tonight, come July 1st, I'm gonna move on to the office areas. So this is not like there's gonna be a long delay between this and the next part of it. It's all gonna roll in within the next few months. It's just that I feel this should be the first thing that could, should be done, so.
And we also have another budget. We had some savings in insurance for one of the insurances this past fiscal year. So there's some money that can be moved over to public buildings as well, if he happens to be early, that, that we can get started on the office space, too. So, right, I don't want you to think there's gonna be some sort of long delay.
I'm not thinking anything. I'm just, you know, I'm just asking, 'cause I, 'cause I really don't. I knew it was gonna be phased. I just wasn't sure how it was gonna be prioritized. So how long are you thinking that, what we're gonna call Phase One should take? And I, I'm not gonna hold anyone, you know, to it, just like off the top of our
Well, because we have funds available in this fiscal year, the crack is gonna get whipped to get it done, so we can use those funds. So I plan to get it done, basically, during the month of June.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I do like this plan. I'm glad that the food bank has an area that they can secure the, the food. Do you think there's gonna be ample room there, when they do have their monthly food banks for the public?
So I did speak with one of the Lions members about that, and they didn't seem to have a concern with it, because if you, if you look at what they have right now for shelving and whatnot, it's basically exactly where I'm putting it. I'm just gonna move it, you know, perpendicular to where it is now. So to answer your question, the feedback I got, which I did look out to them,
Good.
I didn't act arbitrarily and solely, they, they agreed that it would, it should work, so.
I, I do understand why you have to do this in phases, and I think it's a good plan. Is there any other further discussion?
No, I think them for answering our questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we give permission for this project as described to move forward this fiscal year.
Second.
Should there be a cost on this, though, up to $10,000?
He said it might be more, so.
Can you give us like 15?
If you're gonna put a ceiling on it, I would ask for at least 12, maybe 12 to 14. I, I like having a tight number to go by, because it forces me to try and meet it. But I certainly don't wanna be $1,000 short and not be able to finish the project, so.
No, I understand.
You willing to amend?
So, let me add to that. So we'll move forward with the project this year with costs not to exceed $14,000.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for always figuring it out, Jim. Good, we have more. No, I'm just kidding. Mass core. They're gonna build it for us.
So if we could return to the town administrator's report.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of buying things, hold on, I'm locked out. I apologize. This is my first time using the knife.
Yes, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Our public purchasing group consortium, we're at it again. So we have office supplies, paper, and DPW supplies that have come up for renewal. They went out to bid. Sadly, we only got one bid for paper, and there were multiple people, multiple, like 15, that did take out the documents. So it's a little bit of a bummer that we're only getting one again. It is WB Mason. They basically have a lock on the market, so prices have gone up a little bit. But we're doing our part. I've gone electronic here, so. So that's on paper. Office supplies are also going to go up slightly, but this is a trend that we've found. We've done a five-year lookback as a group, and we found that it's, the first year would be a higher percentage, then they drop to a lower percentage, then they go to a higher percentage and drop to a lower percentage. So this is the lower percentage off, and it's around, I wanna say 61.9% anyway. So that's WB Mason also. And then DPW supplies, this is a variety of items, so I would ask that you would vote as presented. Our highway superintendent, thank you, Mr. Ferry, he very much goes to, he goes to every meeting and weighs in and talks about what the needs are as the bids come in. And I thank him for his dedication to this, but he's approved of what came in for the bids. And they vote on that as a group, I'm sorry.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I just had a basic question. So you had said that the price went up, so I, I have no issue with that, because that's how things work. But what you mean is, or I guess I'm just gonna ask you to clarify, it's still less than we would pay if we're not in surges.
Yes, so the benefit to being in surges, not only do, you know, Maura does all the work. She does, I mean, I'm not doing it, Tom's not doing it, so that's a savings. But it's a group of 23 communities, so the idea is that we pool our resources in the sense of bulk ordering, and we get a better price. I am happy to report that Lopes is a continual winner of these bids, so we do work with him still. So it's between Lopes really and T.L. Edwards are our two big companies, but.
Thank you, Ms.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So I hope we don't have to vote on each individual one?
No, you can vote as presented.
Office supplies, paper, and DPW supplies as noted, as presented.
Right, and it's right here on your contract award, and you would just sign this if you vote favorably.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the contracts for office supplies, paper, and Department of Public Works supplies as presented tonight through the surges contracts.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. There's no old business?
One question for us. So these are the chairman and, and
All of you.
Do we have to sign?
Yes, it's a majority, all of you, yes.
So we sign all of them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure. So we're gonna go to new business, 7B, release of Chapter 61A, Landa Williams Street. So we received a letter from the office manager of the planning board. Please be advised on May 1st, 2019, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that the board of selectmen waive the right of right refusal for property referenced above. It's 1420 and 1522, Williams Street, map 11, lots 8 through, 8 through L, is that? Or wouldn't be 1, 8 through 1, and 9, Chapter 61 lots. We've got another letter regarding that, so any questions before we have a motion?
It seems like the board of supervisors and the planning board is in agreement, so I have no issues.
Did we hear from the Conservation Commission there? So we struggle with getting things in writing from them, but you can make the decision without it. I think, I don't believe there's any conservationists. And also, the developers here, if you had any questions, but it seems pretty straightforward.
May I ask a procedural question? When someone is recording from the audience, they're supposed to get permission from the chair, correct?
They are supposed to get permission from the chair and seek prior.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'm not opposed.
I mean, we're already recording, but you do have to seek permission, so that everybody else is aware that you're recording. It's a notification thing.
I'm not opposed to it, it's just that we need to be notified before, so. So I'll hear a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we waive the right of first refusal for 1420 and 1522, Williams Street, map 11, lots 8 through 1 and 9, from Chapter 61A.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Review, Item C, review proposals and vote to Thank you. To approve the national security, number one, national security for door locking systems at Old Town Hall.
So this is to install basically the same system we have here at Town Hall. And also money, there's money in the budget. It's good to go, and we're just waiting on your vote.
What is, actually, I'm not gonna ask that. Will, will we also have access to that building? The Board of Selectmen, will you have access to that? How is this gonna work?
Oh, for like, special?
For the code, are we gonna know? Or is it gonna be the same code for this building? I, I don't, I know, I don't know what we should and shouldn't talk about, 'cause it's the security of the building.
We can talk about this, yes. No, so I'm in agreement. I think that certain folks should be able to have access. However, I don't know about meeting space, because it's not like, I mean, they lock up their stuff, but there's not walls and doors for the different offices, so downstairs on the lower level. But I think Jim and I have talked about it, and I think the idea is that, my hope is that the key card that works here works over there, so we're not giving everybody new cards, and you have to know which one, you know, you have to know to use this one for Old Town. That would just be a nightmare. But people who want to use the facility for meetings can do that, and whoever, you know, wherever their meeting is. So that's the hope, that's the plan.
No, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a, just my personal opinion, I think that's a good plan, and I think that provides a continuity between our two buildings. And the people who know, you know, the security measures to gain access to the building in off-hours are usually individuals who are either employees, or they are members of a board or committee.
And using it for a purpose, right.
You have any questions, Ms.?
No.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve this contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award contract to provide a security system for the Old Town Hall to national security fire alarm systems at a price of $3,825, as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Good work.
I think it's all Jim. Thank you, Jim, and Karen.
And my question was gonna be, by the way, Madam Administrator, was gonna be, what is the current security system? But we'll talk later.
What is the current, what do you mean, the price?
We're not discussing that right now, so we're gonna go to cleaning services, Old Town Hall, Town Hall and the library.
So we went out to, I have a memo in here for you, we went out to So we went out to, I have a memo in here for you, we went out to bid, or excuse me, we solicited quotes because the price there is quotes. And with the new police station, we separated that. Previously, it was all one contract. It was police, fire, Old Town Hall, Town Hall. Well, now that Old Town Hall is being used normally like it's intended to, and the police station has tripled in size. We've made some changes to this and we went out separately for the police station. So the first one is for just Old Town Hall, Town Hall and the library. We only got one bidder. It is what it is. Costs are basically the same, still pretty low. For those three buildings, it's $945 a month with a total contract award of $11,220. And then, I don't know if you want to do this in two motions, so I'll just tell you, the police station, they're gonna be cleaned five days a week. And that's a total contract award of $16,500 with thirteen seventy-five per month. And they also have some special considerations, so it makes sense to keep them separate just for access and things like that. But I do recommend that these contracts be awarded to M&amp;S Cleaning Services.
How do these get paid currently? Is this out of the individual department's line item?
It is right now, and then you voted for the coming fiscal year that everything go into public buildings and properties. However, the one that stayed, the police, because we just didn't know what was going on with that, because it's new. So that may be amended in future years, but for this coming year, the contract for the three buildings is going to be paid out of public buildings and the contract for the police to be paid out of the police.
So what is the name of the company then?
M&amp;S Services.
M&amp;S?
Oh my gosh, I didn't put that in my memo, I'm sorry.
I know.
You know why? It's because there was just one and I was like, oh yeah, they get it. I apologize.
It's the same as we're currently.
Yeah, M&amp;S Cleaning Services.
Do you have any questions, Ms. Scott?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'll entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract for cleaning services for the Town Hall, the Old Town Hall and the library to M&amp;S Cleaning Services at a total contract cost of $11,220 for FY twenty.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the contract for cleaning services for the police station to M&amp;S Services at a contract, total contract amount of $16,500 for fiscal year 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Item C four, award bid for animal shelter roof.
We received three quotes for our roof project on the animal shelter. And we, the lowest bidder is at $11,340, $11,340, which is just a hundred and sixty dollars less than the next bidder. And I say that because I'm totally amazed that it came that close. But I am recommending that it be awarded to Trans Global Construction LLC. They are a reputable company and they're of North Providence. They've done work in Dayton before. The building inspector, who I did consult with prior to this evening about this project, is on board with this group receiving the award.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
Just the eleven three forty, I notice that there are some small.
Yes, he, he did this base bid with alternate thing. We did not request it that way. In a conversation with him, because he was the low bidder, I said, what's going on? What are you quoting me at? And he told me that that first alternate, the $440 thing, basically is necessary so that the roof doesn't collapse. Yep, so I added that together to his base bid. I found that he was still the low bidder and agreed, okay. That's what we would order essentially if it was. Go ahead.
Even with both of the alternates, still the lowest bidder?
No, just the first alternate.
Okay.
Just the first alternate at four forty.
Thank you.
I just don't know what a protection board is, did he?
We don't, and the building commissioner weighed in on this because, you know, I don't know all the roofing lingo, but he said that that, he understands why this roofer's doing that. It makes sense. However, for what this building is, we're not going to need that. It's two trailers.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we award the contract to install a roof on the animal shelter slash modular buildings to Trans Global Construction out of North Providence in a total amount of $11,340 for the base bid and alternate number one.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
You're not gonna have a leaky roof, I want you to know. It's gonna work, I just.
Item D on the new business, vote on vacation carryover request. There's been numerous employees that have requested that they have vacation time up to two weeks to be carried over till next fiscal year. So I will entertain a motion. Do you have that list?
Yeah, I have a list, Mr. Chairman. Just a procedural question, is it okay if I go through the list and then just list who it is and how much time it is? Is that the intent this evening?
Yes, the only person, you can do a blanket motion. There's one person needs to be separate, okay.
Are they all two weeks though?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, yep.
Some people have.
That's why I wanted to specify.
Like I'm looking right now at one employee and it's seventy hours now, so, oh no, that's two weeks for her, thirty-five. So there are. You had your motion saying approve up to two weeks for, and you listed. That's okay. Up to, up to two weeks.
Okay.
So we can't, we're not gonna do more than that with the exception of the last person then? Is that correct?
We're not gonna do more than that.
We're not gonna approve more than two weeks.
Oh, yes, yes. That person's gonna be dealt with separately, so you're dealing with everybody else.
But everybody knows, it's up to two weeks of vacation.
Right.
And this separate one would be up to two weeks, I think, Mr. Chairman, plus three days.
Three days, yes.
Is that correct?
Well, I'm gonna talk about that one.
Yep.
And just so everyone's wondering why we're doing this, this is contractual obligations with our collective bargaining agreements, agreements.
Plural.
Plural.
Accepting motions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the vacation requests for up to two weeks to carry over vacation time from fiscal year nineteen to fiscal year 2020 for the following employees. Rosalind Grassy, Todd Pilling, Nicole Skilson, Christopher McGee, Nancy Pinto, Kerry Easterday, Linda McCarron, Britt Grealish-Rust, Lisa Tetra, Paul Reed, Teresa Costa, Diane Curtis, Valerie Wilson, Lori Van Hook, Rebecca Moss, and Christina Franca.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, we have some, I know, I realize the motion's up to two weeks. So is the plan to pay them, if they don't take the hours, they don't take the vacation time before June thirtieth, is the plan to pay them for the overage beyond two weeks?
Is the plan to pay them for the overage, but no.
In other words, if I work forty hours a week and I'm requesting I carry over a hundred hours, I was just told I can carry over two weeks, eighty hours, so the remaining hours.
Forfeited, unless you take it.
No, no, it's an earned benefit. You can't forfeit it.
It says it in the contract that it's forfeited based upon that. So you have to take it and you can only carry over two weeks.
Otherwise, everybody'd be asking for the monies.
It specifically says it's not cumulative.
I'm not worried about cumulative. When did the labor laws change? I'm not talking the contract, I'm talking labor law. That's what my concern is.
What did you just say? You're not talking about labor laws? You're right, right.
We had a similar situation. And an individual got an attorney involved and we were told that vacation is an earned benefit. And you either use it and up to this carryover two weeks, that could be done, but that you don't forfeit vacation, so you have to pay it.
I actually don't know that to be correct, but I don't, I mean, I'll research that. It's, my experience has always been vacation renews on the next fiscal year, so you use it or lose it by a certain time. Like you have a deadline to use it. And my, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say outside, outside the public sector, I have some experience where, you know, you, you use it or lose it by a deadline. I mean, it's not fiscal year, it's quite a deadline. And where we give the benefit and we are clear, this is not cumulative and this is when you can take it. I'm not sure that that, and we allow, and we allow them to, I mean, I think this is generous enough, we allow them two weeks. And in a couple of unions, even more, so I, I'm not sure.
This two weeks came about as a result of that situation I'm describing.
All right.
Can I ask you a question about that, Madam Administrator? So it seems like to Selectman Goulart's point that up to two weeks would be okay for everyone on the list except for the Board of Health Office Manager who requested a hundred and three hours of vacation time. So I guess I just want to know before I vote on this, and I'm just asking, like procedurally, what's gonna happen? What happens to that extra twenty-three hours of vacation time?
She has to use it or she forfeits it?
She has to use it in 2019.
Right. Your contract specified, you must use this in the current fiscal year that it is earned. Like that's the, because every, you earn vacation time based on longevity. So you hit your anniversary and you're like, oh, I got, you know, an extra week or whatever, which we'll be talking about very soon in the next item. So it's based upon your years in, and you earn it based upon fiscal year. So I, I will certainly look into that because that's a liability for the town.
I'll give you more detail.
Yeah, absolutely. But I do believe that you're very much upfront with how vacation works in the town of Dayton.
I believe you're correct. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, if you're still entertaining motions, I make a motion that we approve the vacation carryover requests from Sergeant Sean Cronin. And the request is for two weeks plus three days of carryover into fiscal year 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that correct?
Any discussion?
I just want to say that.
How do we deal with this one?
So per the union contract, the police union contract of which this employee is a part of, they are allowed to request an additional, so what they get is by right, the police chief can say, yep, you can carry over your two weeks. Anything above that, they come to you for requests. So he, these three hours is, or three days, I'm sorry, the three days is what he's requesting truly from you.
And that type of language is not included in the other CBA, which is why, okay, I'm just making sure.
No, no, that's fine. I have read these over and over today.
I totally trust you. For myself, I just wanted to.
No, absolutely.
To understand, because usually we get two weeks or less of carryover.
So I think we got a second on that motion, is that correct? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the ayes have it. Next item, request by members of the police department for recognition of time. So we've.
Okay, this is, oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
Okay. Way back when, when we hired Lisa Tetra, she came from Berkeley with some significant experience. You had hired her and agreed to start her and recognize five years of municipal service because she did the same position in another town, and we recognize the value in not having to train somebody from scratch, really, is what that is all about. So she came in. Because of that vote, some police officers are looking for the same sort of benefit. This is something that did come up during negotiations. There is language in the contract that says that this would be examined on a case-by-case basis for the purposes of vacation. Now, I think it's very clear, we're very generous with our vacation, something that I'm going to look at in the next, you know, cycles of negotiations. However, they want to be recognized, they're three individuals. They were all hired before this new language in the contract was accepted by both parties and voted on. They are looking for recognition of service with outside police departments, not our police department. There are some, there's some history here with multiple unions where provisions about recognizing years served, even with the town of Dayton, have bounced in and out of contracts for longevity purposes, but they stuck around for vacation. So if you, there's, there's an employee that provided, not on this list, that provided service to the town as a reserve police officer, a pretty significant service actually, and when he was placed on the department as full-time, he didn't get recognized for his reserve service. I would just ask if you do vote this, that we be fair across the board and extend it to other people as well. To me, if you're recognizing time served outside of this community, reserve time should be recognized. Time is time. I mean, it just sort of doesn't reconcile with me if you're gonna recognize outside of town of Dayton service and not town of Dayton service. So that being said, Patrolman Barrows or Patrolman Gann also have service with the town of Dayton. However, I think they came in at a time when the contract did not preclude the reserve service. So this is very confusing, which is why it's before you, because I can't do it by myself. I need you to weigh in on whether or not you want to recognize. Officer McGann has specifically showed you that he, you know, how these three individuals will be receiving vacation. The most significant is Patrolman McGovern, and I will say that he has about ten years of service with another community. So that's pretty substantial. The experience is valuable. We, I don't believe had to pay to go to the academy for that, so that's some savings to the town. However, I don't, I don't know how you feel about this. I kind of bounce back and forth on both sides. But I want to be fair and consistent, so I, on this one, I just don't really know how to be fair and consistent due to all of the nuances surrounding it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with the town administrator. I guess I don't, I just hope that whatever we decide, that we will avoid complaints of, and these are, there are not currently complaints, I'm saying future complaints or possible complaints of inconsistency or unfairness. So I just think we need, and I'm not even saying that Ms. Tetra, when she was hired, that that was a precedent, but I think
Yes.
going, now that this is the second time this has been raised, I just think we need to, before we vote tonight, think about how we want to take this going forward, because now this is the second vote and it's kind of like.
Well, this is like that determining factor. Like there's another employee I can think of right now that would potentially be, I mean, we, maybe not. I mean, maybe if the stipulation is that the service has to be exact, like assessing office to assessing office, for example, police officer to police officer, but where there's been various votes and cases of recognizing town time, town of Dayton time and not, I just, we need to set some sort of standard, and it can start today. It can be a standard that starts today. Reconciling with different bargaining agreements over the years, so I mean, it is confusing. I apologize.
No, I don't, I don't think this is that confusing, Madam Administrator. I think it's quite clear from what was prepared this evening that they were full-time in their previous respective towns and then they were here in Dayton full-time. Ms. Tetra was full-time in Berkeley in her current role, in that role, previous role in the assessor's office there. And now she's full-time in Dayton. That's comparing apples to apples, oranges to oranges.
I just want you to be aware of this reserve time question and basically make a decision on that. Or just give me some guidance on where we sit there, so. I mean, do you have any questions?
Well, in regards to the reserve time, a reserve officer, they're not working full-time though, are they?
No, no, they fill in.
So how does that, how do we determine how much time we're gonna give them?
Right, so there, we, we talked about this at the, at the table for negotiations and we came up with half. So if you were a reserve officer for ten years, you'd be recognized for five years. But that's for, you know, anybody hired after that agreement was instated, so that's July 1, 2018. Because it, you know, time is time. We're gonna recognize that, but we just cut it in half because it would be part-time.
Not full-time.
Right, but a small department like ours, we do rely on a reserve force. We use them all the time. And then they do details.
And isn't that kind of like the fire department equivalent of like on-call?
Right, however, we do use our fire, well, actually, I don't even know if that's true. I was gonna say we use them more, but, yeah, it's.
I'm just trying to think of what this applies to in the other departments, so that if we get other requests going forward, that we're not, we're not surprised.
So if that's, and so here's my recommendation, we specifically focus on what they're. So if that's, and so here's my recommendation, we specifically focus on what they're asking for, for the outside service. That's what I'm gonna categorize it, outside service.
And I, I do agree with what they're requesting. They're coming from a police department to our police department, all three towns border Dayton, so they have a familiarity with, with Dayton. So I support this. We'll see if any other cases come up in the future, but I, as far as these three here-
If you were specific in saying that it's recognizing very similar duties, that's what we did with Mrs. Tetra, Ms. Tetra.
Correct.
We were very, we were making the decision based upon the realization that assessing is not, you know, not, you can't just walk in and be an assessor and know what's going on. So recognizing the, the skill that goes along with it and the very nuanced information that she has.
So when we say serve full-time with Rehoboth Police, Somerset Police, Berkeley Police, we're talking as a police officer?
Correct, full-time police patrolmen.
In the same role, Madam Administrator, correct?
That's what I'm at.
Right, patrolman.
And I do just-
And Barrows was a reserve here and came back.
He was, yeah, I remember that. And I do just want to make one quick remark, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. For example, Patrolman McGovern, if the board voted in favor of this request, would, would get an additional five days of vacation. However, to the, the town administrator's point, I'm just thinking that that's probably worth less, that five days of vacation, than getting someone who has that many years of experience. We didn't have to train someone, we didn't have to invest all those time and resources. So that's why I'm supportive of the request this evening.
I agree. Mrs. Goulart, nope, Mrs. Goulart, do you have any questions?
Is vacation the only benefit we're talking about?
In this case, yes.
So-
Because I'm thinking, you know, when you talk about if somebody's a reserve, you give them half-time. I, I think you're probably aware of this, the whole formula for recognition of service at the public retirement level has changed, and there's a formula now, so that it's based on hours per year. So that was my concern, that down the road, this really has no reflection on retirement benefits. It's only relative to vacation, where they would be placed on the list for vacation when they come through the door. In other words, if you come through the door and you've got these years of experience as a, I'll use police officer, and you come here as a police officer, instead of starting out at the very bottom, you would have something, you would have something.
For vacation.
Yes.
So, and we have agreed that it would be looked at and examined on a case-by-case basis. So if they're like from California, no offense, no offense to California, but maybe they're not as familiar with Massachusetts laws, we might not recognize that service. So we wanted it to be case-by-case, to protect the town's interest in case, that we wouldn't be locked into anything. So you, it still comes before you, they don't just walk in the door and get it, it would still be a decision made before you.
I don't have a problem with Mrs. Tetra or what's presented here this, tonight. However, I am not comfortable a case-by-case basis in the future, I think we need a policy. I think it should be based on, well, for example, I remember the discussion, I was at maximum benefit when I went from Dayton Rehoboth to the University of Massachusetts, and instead of starting out at the very minimum as a new person at UMass, they gave me four weeks. They recognized my service in the public schools, and I had four weeks. So, so this is sort of what happened to me.
Right.
But the university has a policy about that, so I think, all I'm saying is, I think we need to do something to protect the town, or else we'll have-
So I guess that's why I'm here, I, I need to know how you feel, and then I can put pen to paper and put something together, which is-
So that we come up with something fair, that, that no one will say, well, so-and-so got it, but this one didn't get it, but that's my only point.
Right, no, and I, it's a good one, and I agree with it.
I think to your point though, Selectman Goulart, please correct me if I'm wrong. When we were considering Ms. Tetra, we also considered, I believe it was vacation time, of course, but it was also like what she came in as, in terms of a grade.
You recognized it.
I know that there are differences between the two CBAs, right? They're not, it's not apples to apples, but I think her, Selectman Goulart's question, correct me if I'm wrong, was, does this affect anything else? So I think it did in that one case.
No, not in the wage, all right, yeah, and I, and I know that, and that's why I'm specifically looking at vacation. Because, as I mentioned to the chairman, when it comes to other benefits that are covered under Chapter 32B, like retirement, and how you figure out creditable years of service, they have a revised formula for all of that, and, you know-
Their years of service are recognized by, just like my years outside of Dayton are recognized, but I, you know-
But if you're not a full-time person, it's, you don't get a full year if you don't put in, you don't work full-time.
They were full-time here.
Right, so that's why I'm not questioning that.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to make clear, vacation answers the question, exactly, yep.
So how does this impact their seniority now in the town?
It doesn't, this is only recognition for vacation. This is why it doesn't really make sense to me, because time is time, if you're gonna recognize it for one. But vacation, this is what they're asking for, this is what the, the contract has laid out, because it's an issue. So you're recognizing their, their service for vacation purposes only tonight.
I, I just wanted to say, before we take a vote, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Selectman Goulart's request, if you will, to have a policy, because my thoughts are that policy will go to the Policy Review Board, they have representation from all the CBAs, and the CBAs have different things in them, so I think that this is probably a good thing going forward. So I appreciate that request, Selectman Goulart.
Right, and we won't have to start from scratch, they'll, I'm sure we'll find a policy out there.
Yep, already found it, Northampton, or Northfield.
So I'm entertaining, yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the three requests pursuant to vacation time as prepared in this April 22nd, 2019 letter from the Dayton Police Officers, Mass. COP Local 306.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I want to state that Jason McGovern is my grand nephew, and if he were the only person listed here, I would not vote on this tonight, but since it includes other employees, I will vote on this.
Thanks for acknowledging that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I have one more request on that, due to the fact that Patrolman Govern, McGovern will now have five additional days and not that much time to use it, would you grant him the ability to use those five days in the next fiscal year if he cannot use them?
Could we just do him part of that blanket, up to two weeks?
Yeah, I'm sorry, five days, I'm like, five.
Just in case, I don't know how much time he has.
And I don't know if he's got any vacation scheduled, I don't, so-
Yeah, he may take the next five days off for all we know.
Sorry, Chief.
I just gave you a vacation.
Are you entertaining?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to allow Patrolman Jason McGovern, if he so chooses, to carry over up to two weeks of vacation time from 2019 into fiscal year 2020.
I'm gonna step-
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm gonna step down and second this motion.
Under discussion, I am not, I'm gonna abstain on this because he is my grand nephew.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
One abstention.
Yep.
One abstention, I'm sorry.
For the record.
I'm abstention. Item F on the new business, approval of completed field use application for the Cowship Festival.
What would happen if we said no?
Right, they'd have it anyway.
And they already sell those tickets, you'd have a lot of disappointed campers, I guess.
And we'd have angry cows on our-
But they wouldn't-
But on the other hand, I wouldn't have to judge who the winner is.
Are you a judge?
Judge this, yeah.
I'm a judge, I asked Ed, actually, to be a judge.
Is that why he didn't ask anyone? It's usually the person who gets elected, I was actually, you can have it.
Oh, you can have my place.
But, no, it's okay.
You can have my place.
No, I, I watched Mallory do it last year, so apparently she's-
He hung it with Kevin.
They wanted experience this year, that's what they're going with.
What's that, experience?
But actually, it should be you, because you didn't get a chance to do it.
I know, I don't, I can step down.
I will be there on the field, we got the graduation at four o'clock, but I will be there at two o'clock.
Well, something happens, now you, you're her stand-in, understudy, is that such a thing?
Well, if I'm playing games with my kids, you know, you gotta step up. That happened last year, I was like, I think I need to go back there.
My wife and I actually babysat her children while she was on the field doing the judging. And your youngest one kept on saying, cow poo, cow poo, that was the only words she said, cow poo. Is that appropriate for cable?
Yeah, we're not fine on that. Is it past eight o'clock, there's different rules, past eight. Nope, I'm very excited, I will be there regardless, but if I need to step down as judge, I'm totally fine, I don't need a holler.
Well, if you happen to step into this job, then-
You can step into-
I need to clean your shoes, and I will jump in. So I'll entertain-
You're supposed to wear the shirt, though, at the following selectmen's meeting.
I don't have-
They'll get you one, right?
I don't have a shirt, I've, I've seen Mrs. Goulart wear the shirt, but I have not, uh-
I wore my shirt.
I don't have one, so I'll speak to someone in the Lions Club.
Mr. Only, if you're watching.
I know, I hope he is.
Help us out.
We need to step up.
We just changed his judges, we told him about shirts, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request of the Lions Club to hold the annual Cowship Festival from May 30th to June 2nd.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I remember one year when Father Tim, who was pastor at St. Nicholas, was the judge, and that third cow wasn't cooperating, and he was concerned about whether or not he was gonna get to knock Dayton before a flock.
Cows have performance anxiety too, that's what we've done.
Was that the year when they saw their handler and they were like, oh, and then just went, and then-
Yes, yes, it was.
So, he needs to be on hand, yeah.
Soon as he came on the field, they were so happy.
Well, they had the Cowship Festival last year also in Rehoboth, and they brought a, they brought another cow in to get the three cows to get going, they brought a fourth one in, yep. Okay, the next item, G, request from library to declare surplus equipment.
They had some tables, and they received some children's furniture from the Lakeville Public Library, so they're just replacing some old furniture and looking to dispose of them in the best interest of the town.
I assume the town can use those tables, that they sound like they're in rough shape.
Yeah, they're not in the best, and they're also chilled, like, they're for kids, so, I don't-
We used to use the children's school chairs in this room.
Can I just say how happy I am we have these? These are about a year old.
I wanna stay on the subject.
He wants the children's table.
Yeah, the children's, I don't, I don't know where we would put them, honestly, so, and she said you could, I asked her that, she goes, well, you can look at them, but they're kind of rundown.
If you want to use one of these children's room tables in there, I'll use the desk, you can use the children's table.
Well, you've taken my desk away.
Now you're getting a little kid's table. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve that two tables from the library be declared surplus property as voted by the Board of Trustees.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I would mention to the public, if, I know we have some daycare programs in town, now that this has been declared surplus, is that, if anyone's interested in looking at these, just get in touch with Mrs. Brady in our office before they're disposed of, because if you can use them, we could probably make some kind of arrangement.
H, approve and sign updated contract for appraisal services for Miller's Lane project. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the contract that's before us?
Yes.
I know I have.
And the, like, figure of the attachments.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I didn't, I appreciated the attachment especially, so I wanted to thank whoever prepared that.
Well, it's Mr. Giroux.
Thank you, Mr. Giroux, that's why, that's why the town enjoys his services.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the contract for appraisal services as submitted by Claude Giroux in the amount of $8,775 for appraisal of properties for the Miller's Lane project.
I will second that.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Aye.
If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a recommendation from Chief, Police Chief McDonald to hire a part-time dispatcher. It's my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen appoint Officer Alora Brock Clemens as a part-time dispatcher.
I'm gonna happily motion this, I guess my question for the town administrator is, is this officer currently part-time as an officer? Okay.
She's a reserve, yep.
So she would essentially be full-time between the two?
Uh, not necessarily, she's not going to, I don't know if I can actually say this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She's gonna be like a reserve dispatcher, isn't she?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if I can publicly say why, nothing's wrong, everything's fine, but she does need this vote so she can go to training, and I actually thank her for stepping up and doing this.
And I will second Dr. Z's motion.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Resignation letters, we received a letter, the Board of Selectmen received a letter. It is with a heavy heart that I submit my letter of resignation from the Open Space Committee. We are moving out of this wonderful town, I would like to thank all of you for the confidence in me. The Open Space Committee is a wonderful group of people, and they are doing great things. Sincerely, Edward Pollock. And I know that he has left our town, he's moved to a neighboring town, and we wish him the, the best of luck and thank him for his service to the town.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation for Edward Pollock from the Open Space Committee with thanks and appreciation.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. We also received a, a letter, it's addressed to the Dayton Trails Committee. This memorandum is to notify the Dayton Board of Selectmen that effective immediately, I am submitting my resignation from the Dayton Trails Committee. The change in my status is due to the change in job responsibilities that I've taken on with my employer and the additional responsibilities I now have caring for my mother. As we all know, the work of the Trails Committee is vitally important to our town, so I would just like to encourage the Board of Selectmen and the town to continue to do all they can to support the work of the committee as its members continue to work to make our trail system more accessible to all of our residents. Respectfully submitted, Kim Fennel Gale.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept the resignation effective immediately of Mrs. Kim Fennel Gale from the Trails Committee with thanks and appreciation for her service.
Second.
Is there a second? I also would like to thank Ms., Mrs. Gale for all the work she's done for our town, thank you. All those in favor?
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
I apologize, I was just gonna say both of those committees are in real desperate need of members, so if that sounds interesting to you, please consider volunteering your time.
Thank you.
That was Dayton Trails Committee and Open Space Committee, thanks.
So I'm going to give this next letter to our clerk, because I am a member of the Historic Commi, Commission, and if you could address it, and you can, I won't be voting on this, I'll abstain from voting on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this letter is addressed to our board dated May 21st. Please be advised that the Historical Commission voted at their May 21st meeting to recommend the following individuals be appointed to the Historic Commission to fill our two vacancies. Pamela Martin Nickerson and Rafa Delphin, respectfully yours, Pat Olson, chairperson. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint both Pamela Martin Nickerson and Rafa Delphin to the Historical Commission.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, abstention, abstention has, I may have said aye at the beginning, automatically, but I'm abstaining.
That was really an abstention. I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, so there are no more vacancies on the Historical Commission, correct?
But they will be shortly, because one member, in June 30th, he's asking not to be reappointed, so at that point, in July, I'll come back before us and we'll be submitting another, our name.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The next agenda item is the review of selectmen's meeting schedule for the second half of this year.
I think it looks good.
Yep.
Didn't forget a month this time, so that's good.
You didn't forget a month, but I don't know if you see here, at the end it says December 2018, so if we could just update that to 2019. That doesn't change anything, it doesn't change the date, yeah.
Are they the right dates, though? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys.
No, totally fine.
The other thing to just notice, in August, I didn't think it wise to do the last week of August because it's leading up to Labor Day, so those are two meetings back-to-back, and I just wanted to make sure you're okay with that.
To not have them in the last week of August, you mean?
Correct, I think it's the 28th or 7th, whatever that Wednesday is. Oh, it would be the 8th, 28th. Trying to avoid Labor Day.
So when is Labor Day? Labor Day is the following Monday.
Labor Day is February 2nd, but that week where it's the summer, I don't know.
Everyone, there are a lot of people are out of town. I have no objection with moving it to August 21st. That's fine with me.
So the proposed schedule is for the Selectmen to meet at 6:30 on July 10th, July 24th, August 14th, August 21st, September 11th, September 25th, October 9th, October 23rd, November 13th, November 20th, and December 11th and December 18th.
Again, for the months of November and December, those are also back-to-back because of Thanksgiving and Christmas, the Christmas holiday.
So that November schedule, you didn't take into consideration of my anniversary the day before?
My birthday is November 20th.
So I bring this up because if you don't have, if you have an issue, this is now the time.
Oh, I have no issue with it November 20th. No issue.
I'm okay with the schedule. Mrs. Gulat, you have any concerns?
I got a comment.
Sure.
September 2nd is my birthday. That was Labor Day for my mother.
Get out of here. I love that. I was in the hospital during Labor Day.
Almost. One of my hat. So I'll entertain a motion and.
She labored when she's supposed to be recognized.
Actually made it a holiday.
And our son was born on my birthday, and that was Labor Day for me, too.
That's, I'm sure it was.
There's a lot of Labor Days back.
So realize that this schedule can be changed if we have a need to change it.
Add more to the.
Yes, probably, yes.
We do make that disclaimer, yes.
Yes. So someone wants to make a motion?
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the proposed schedule of meetings and important dates as prepared this evening with the December meetings changed to 2019.
Is there a second?
Scrivener's error.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it.
Do you watch Big Brother? Is that why? That's amazing.
I know. I was being, I was letting that slide. I liked that.
Oh, I'm sorry, but it was very good. That was really good.
So the next item is approval of FP5.
That's just fancy words for underground storage permits.
Okay. Underground storage permits issued by the Fire Department. So we have one for Reese's Auto Sales and we have one for, it used to be Get More, but what is it now called? What's the gas station called? I don't know.
Highway Gas?
Value.
Value Gas.
Value, yes. Value Gas.
Get More, previously Get More. That's why no one understood what it was. We're like, it's not, oh, it's a different name now.
Also Taunton Yacht Club.
In Taunton Yacht. So there's three total? Okay.
What about the station on Florida Gorge?
It might be bigger than, what is it, 10,000 gallons? That can't be. Well, they'll be back before us next meeting. This is the three we have.
They have underground storage.
Sink or swim in the license world.
That's how I feel. No offense to the business, but.
So do you want us to take these individually, or can we take all three in one motion?
I was going to make one motion, but then say who it is, you know, specifically. Are you entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the FP2 permits to be issued by the Fire Department for Reese's Auto Sales Incorporated at 556 Somerset Ave., North Dayton, Dinesh Patel at 11866, excuse me, County Street, Dayton, Mass., and the Taunton Yacht Club at 2125 Water Street, Dayton, Mass.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it.
What is the date? They just have to do this by a certain date?
They've already been inspected and approved by the Fire Department.
Oh, so maybe mobile hasn't been checked yet?
They haven't. They haven't applied.
But they might have a, so there's limits on gallons, and so they might not trip it based upon the gallons. Higher the gallon, it becomes a state inspection.
So.
Okay.
So I'm going to look into it. Correct. I'm going to look into it, and then if we do have to do it, we'll have it on a next agenda, but.
But it would be incumbent upon the business to sort of Selectman Gulat's point, to get that in. If you need this license to operate your business, as a Board of Selectmen member, I'm relying on you as the owner of the business to know when you need to get in those licenses.
Well, we're going to keep our list, too, at the same time, so just to make sure everyone's doing what they're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next agenda item is the review motions for the annual town meeting.
These are in draft form. I just want to let you know that they will be reviewed by council. All this is really is, this year, there's some confusion just because of the votes that the Finance Committee made about lowering certain aspects of budgets. So we are making motions. We reviewed them together, Karen and I, but today we did have to focus on the warrant. The warrant's been posted, everybody. Today was the day. So they'll be reviewed by town council, and he'll make sure. There were a couple in his review, a couple of articles that he was specific about what the motions will entail, such as map and lot numbers and things like that, so we'll make sure we incorporate that commentary. But this is just to give you an idea of what will be before you at town, or before the town at town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to, or Madam Administrator, do we need to vote to approve these?
So this is just to give you information. This might be my fault, because I want to just give you information, and maybe I should stop.
These are usually.
But you've already voted on the funding sources. You agreed with the Board of Selectmen's recommendations last.
Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, the Finance Committee recommendations last.
And the Board of Selectmen.
Right. So you've agreed to the funding sources, and we just take that and put it into words as a motion. So there's really nothing for you to do. It's just to give you a peek at what is going on. And I don't have to do this going forward. I just like to give information.
I totally do not mind it being on here, but I'm just thinking procedurally, perhaps, maybe we, maybe it should have always been on here, but correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Gulat, and even you, Selectman Pacheco, you've been here about a year now. We usually are handed these sort of before the meeting. Like, I don't recall it ever. So is there a reason why? Is it just transparency? I'm just.
Literally, it's just to let you know what's going on.
This to be on there, I guess is my question.
I guess we don't. I mean, I want you to be involved. I think this is also habit for me. From previous community, we did a little bit differently. I think it's just habit. So if you don't want this in the future, that's fine.
I just didn't know if we needed to vote, because my thing is, it sounds like some things might change just a little bit.
Yeah.
So if we vote and then it's like we're stuck with this version, I would rather just have it be an FYI for the public.
Yeah, and I don't think you were looking for a vote, though. You just said the review.
But I did have a question specifically for Selectman Gulat on one of these, and now I'm blanking at what it was, but I'll just reach out to you.
Was it 15? The one we were talking about earlier?
No, that was a last-minute crisis that came up this afternoon. Karen and I talked about it this morning, and now I.
You have a senior moment.
I sure am. I wish I knew what it was, but I know where to find you, so I can talk to you. But it was specific to you, so I'm sure I'll figure this out at 2:00 in the morning.
Drop me something to do with dirty water.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm totally blanking, so I will reach out to you, Selectman Gulat, when it comes to my mind.
No, I appreciate this. This is the earliest I've ever received the motions, so I wasn't making a criticism. I really appreciate this. I just didn't know if we needed to vote, because we had never done that before.
And we also put in here on certain of the articles that were to, you both Finance Committee and you agreed to defer, so we're just writing moves that the town passed without action.
Sure.
Maybe that's what it was. That's what we normally say, right?
Or just someone doesn't make a motion.
Just doesn't make the motion. So if, like William Street, I know one of our things was requesting $10,000 for William Street drainage. Both groups decided to defer to the fall town meeting on that item. We would just say, Mr. Moderator, I move to pass without action.
Well, he, no, what he'll do is he'll call for a motion on article number.
And then nobody will make it.
And then he'll ask again, are there any motions? And if no one says anything, he'll move to the next article.
Okay, so should we go with move to pass without action, or just let them not say anything?
No one makes a motion.
Makes a motion.
All right, well, that saves us paper.
And usually it's written as just like no motion, or it might be there, but it says like no motion in big letters.
Move that the town pass without action, so that there's, so that the folks sitting there in the audience know we know what we're doing, and it's not just dead air.
It'll be recorded as.
We missed something.
It'll just be recorded as no motion on the article.
Okay.
But it can come up at a future meeting.
Sure. All right, and I have, I need to speak with Mr. McKeon tomorrow anyway, so we'll just let him know that that's happening, so he is aware. All right, and that's it.
Correspondents, we received a letter from Fire Chief McGee. I am writing this letter to inform you that on May 19, 2019, I will be appointing two new members to the Call Firefighter EMT B ranks. The new members are Nicholas Wood and Christopher Raposo. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me. So I assume they've already begun working for the Fire Department, and we welcome them to our town as new employees.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of the appointment of Nicholas Wood and Christopher Raposo to the Call Firefighter EMT ranks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it.
Welcome, welcome.
We received a second letter. This is addressed to Treasurer Collector Mary Hathaway. Dear Mary, please accept this letter as notification that I will be retiring from my position as Assistant Treasurer Collector in three months. My last day of employment will be Thursday, August 15, 2019. Thank you all for your support over the last 18 years and for the opportunity to work as your Assistant Treasurer Collector. I wish you all the best. Respectfully submitted, Helen Cadlec.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the notification of retirement from our Assistant Treasurer/Collector Helen Cadlec with sincere thanks and appreciation for her over 18 years of dedicated service to our town and our residents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just discussion?
I'm sorry.
Comment?
Yep.
Helen, I can't thank you enough for what you did when you stepped up somewhere between 2008 and '09. I had full confidence you could do it, and you proved me right, so thank you very much. We appreciate you taking on that extra duty and all of that responsibility. Great job.
Thank you.
I will miss her, Mr. Chairman. She's just a dedicated individual. You will be missed, Helen.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Announcements. As we mentioned earlier, there's going to be a special town meeting on June 3, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School Auditorium. In following that, there'll be an annual town meeting at 7:00 p.m. at Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School Auditorium. Bulky items, curbside pickup. It began this past Monday, the week of May 20 through May 24. Tags are still on sale at the Board of Health Office, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass., 02715. For more information, call the Board of Health at 774-872-0943. And I know that I had put a refrigerator in front of my house yesterday with the tag, and it was picked up early this morning.
Did you take out the thing that they make you take out? Is that refrigerator?
Take the door off. You have to take the door off.
Yeah, yes.
Good, okay.
Check in, he's in compliance.
We don't want any complaints when we're just trucking.
I did, I thought I did see you drive by a couple times to see whether or not.
Take a picture.
Right, no, I did take the door off. It wasn't that easy.
Selectmen illegally recycle their refrigerator.
He's the chairman.
He didn't. Does the joke, yep.
Billman 11.
That's what they're here for.
Just a reminder that this coming Monday, Memorial Day, there'll be a parade beginning in Rehoboth. I would ask as many people as possible to attend this parade. As you know, every other year, one year it's in Rehoboth. Next year it'll be in Dayton. I believe my colleagues will be marching the parade. As Selectmen, I'll be marching with the Rehoboth Miniman. There are vacancies on the following boards. The Trail Committee, as noted earlier, zoning Board of Appeals, the Governance Committee, Seoul Conservation Commission, Land Use Committee, Bylaw Committee, CPC at Lodge Member, and the Open Space Committee. Selectmen reports. I know, Dr. Z, you wanted to say something on the Selectmen's reports?
Just very briefly, just a quick update on our Green Communities designation application. This is where the town needs to tell the Green Communities Program what exactly we want to use the $144,000 for. We did have to change around some of the items, so I just wanted to let my colleagues and the public know what the town had decided. It is in line with exactly what we had stated at a previous meeting our projects would be. We simply expanded them to other buildings within the town. So one would be installing LED lighting and controls at primetime. Dayton Public Library, Fire Station 1 and Fire Station 2. Two, installing Wi-Fi programmable thermostats in Town Hall, primetime, the Dayton Public Library, Old Town Hall, and Fire Station 1. Building weatherization at Dayton Middle School, Dayton Elementary School, and we will be in touch with the school about that. Town Hall, Dayton Public Library, Fire Station 1, Fire Station 2, and the Highway Garage. And the installation of two electric vehicle charging stations at Town Hall and Old Town Hall. For the public and for my colleagues, if you wish to see the cost, as well as the potential energy savings from these measures, everything is within the Energy Reduction Plan, which we comprised probably last year. It is on our website, so everything is there. But all in total of our $144,000, it looks like this will come in around 138, 139. So there should be just a wee bit of money left over from that grant. So more energy, the good thing is more energy savings for the town, because our previous ideas, Mr. Chairman, a lot of them were at just single buildings, like Town Hall furnace replacement. The energy savings from that is just not enough for the investment, so that's why we kind of broadened. We might have a few tweaks to make, but I will bring that to the Board, but we're hoping to resubmit next week.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I attended a meeting last Thursday. It was a Sursage-sponsored meeting, and we met in Easton at the Water Department. There were two speakers from the EPA. One of them was Newton Tetter, who was, I believe, second-in-command, and somebody from the Audubon Society and somebody from DEP. And we were talking about how we're going to meet the requirements of stormwater plans. And I have enrolled in two-day session to get the stormwater management plan completed to meet the July 1 deadline. And also, there's a second training on the IDDE program that deals with illicit discharges. So these will be some training sessions that are coming up that will be beneficial to the Stormwater Committee and also to the town as we move forward with our plan. And we were commended by Nelson Tetter, Newton Tetter, for the NOI we submitted because we incorporated so much local material, and I told him the positions represented on our Stormwater Committee, and he said, that's exactly what you need. You've got every board you need. So that was very nice to hear.
Thank you. Acknowledgements. We received a donation to Primetime in memory of Deborah McGee in the amount of $40, and we also received an anonymous donation in the amount of $30 for Primetime.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of the primetime donations of $40 in memory of Deborah McGee and $30 to the primetime gift and donations account.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Approval of the warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 46A-19 in the amount of $98,804.83 payroll. Warrant 46B-19 in the amount $279.33, 90 cents, accounts payable, dated May 15. Warrant 47A-19 in the amount of $97,927.81 payroll. 47B-19 in the amount of $224,074.92, and 47C-19 in the amount of $100, the last two being accounts payable, dated May 22.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention? The ayes have it. Public input? Anybody want to say anything?
What's that? Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good, you should be. Good, you should be.
Kingsley Thomas, so my name is-
Oh, very nice.
He's, well, just a little lamb, he's three weeks old.
Oh, he's fresh.
And I, I did mention to a couple people, but I just, it's, I get a little choked up just talking about it because it's so happened, because she went through a lot to get there, but, uh, everything's fine, baby's healthy. Eight pounds, three ounces, I still don't know the length, because I didn't, just get that for some reason. But, uh, everything's fine, and everybody's working together to help, help.
Congratulations. It takes a village, so it sounds like you-
It sure does, I'll tell you that.
Is this your first twin, Tom?
This'll be number three.
Oh, wow.
My wife really wanted a girl, but it didn't go that route. She also wanted the child to be born on her birthday, but that didn't happen. Apparently, it's something between a mother-daughter thing, so I don't know.
A lot of demands there.
Right.
But, uh, May first was the actual, uh-
Well, we're, we're happy that she's healthy, and since we're, uh, dedicating this time to grandfathers that are proud of their grandchildren, my grandson Terrell, my oldest grandson, graduated today from the University of Connecticut.
Oh, congratulations to him.
So we're very, uh, we're very proud of him, so.
Which campus?
Uh, New Haven.
Congratulations to him.
Congrats.
So we're very proud of him. Congratulations to you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.